So I apologize for the tardiness here, but we'll get started in just a few minutes. Thank you. If board members could take their seat, please. Okay, we're going to get started. We're a little late here, so I'm going to call the work session to order. It's Monday, November the 19th, 2018, and all board members are present except for Dina Mitchell, and she'll be joining us shortly. So the first item that we have, Mr. Stock, is discussion on the English Language Arts Q and A.
Yes, and so as a Q and A, I guess it's your question and our answers. So open for business if you have questions about ELA. I'm sure there are some, so we'll be happy. We have the directors, the elementary directors here who can speak a little bit to the, you know, what they know about the building level focus of those issues. But I'm here, I can speak to a lot of the overall district issues.
Okay, so I'd like to open it up to board members. For those of you that have questions on, yes, Ms. Hildy.
My question is not on specifics of the curriculum, but just on communication and objectives and improving communication and making sure all our teachers understand what is or isn't expected of them.
Yes, and so as Dr. Bishop indicated at a previous board meeting, some talk about putting together some of those items regarding where flexibility lies. That tends to be the number one question that seems to come from everyone about reading implementation is where does that individual teacher flexibility lie? And I think those parents who came to our pilot parent night, which was our, just a pilot night to try to go through a dry run of demoing some of those things, I think the parents that came left, at least the emails they sent to me from the parent group, there was at least three or four parents that sent me emails afterwards indicating that that was very helpful. So there's some draft documents that are in partial formation right now, we're trying to merge them. Several of us have been working on those areas. What makes it difficult is that you can't create a written document that describes everywhere a teacher can be flexible. We can, I'll give you one example. I mean, we can say something like, can you take a brain break with your students? Yes, absolutely. But then at the school level, they have to have those kinds of discussions, like, well, what does a brain break look like to a kindergartner? What's it look like in fifth grade? What's it look like after five pounds of Halloween candy? You know, there's all these things that you can't really write rules for, but teachers should know, and we can put that in writing, that yes, if your kids are acting up and it's a frustrating day and a lot of seat time, yeah, take a brain break. So there's things like that that we've got in draft form that we will try to have a plan or getting those things out and get them posted. But I think the one thing we're learning here is that the focus of all of this really, really lies at the building level. We can put some of those things together and try to communicate that, and we will, but those instructional coaches, principals, and teachers need to engage in those discussions once those written things are put together.
Any other board members? Mr. Donnelly.
And Dr. Stock. So with our new reading curriculum, are there schools that aren't utilizing it currently? I'm trying to understand how, how much, how much is being utilized out there?
Well, I'll have Glenn come and join me. Glenn and the directors could come up here because they would have direct information about what they're aware of at the building level. But we do know this, that there were some charter schools and some schools, of course, that did not choose to use the materials. There were some charter schools and other alternative schools who chose to purchase the Cengage materials but have developed their own methods of prioritizing those. But for the most part, all of our public schools, you know, rolled out and did the priority plans and so on. But, so to answer the question, are there any schools that are, quote, I think you said, "not using it"? Is that the way you worded that? I'll turn to the directors and ask if they would like to take a stab at that.
Well, I can speak for one of the schools that I direct. That being Chugatch optional, their optional program, and they're using the Lucy Culkins' English Language Arts program along with some of our optional, other optional programs. I think one of those would be Bowman Optional, using Lucy Culkins, correct? And Denali Elementary, Marcus, are they using Lucy Culkins as well?
Yes, actually.
Yeah, turn it on, Marcus.
Denali's actually using a different set of curriculum that they just purchased, got the authorization to purchase this year. It's a big, I forget the whole title.
Is it Great Books?
Great Books, yes. Great Book series that Denali Elementary is using. And that's the only other one off of my load that's using something different.
Burchwood ABC uses a hybrid piece. They use Spalding for their foundational skills, and then they pair it with some of the literature and the nonfiction pieces from Reach for Reading. And our immersion programs certainly are using Reach for Reading, but they have a more condensed timeline and pacing because of their limited time availability.
I would echo that with Bowman Optional, which has the neighborhood side, which is using Reach for Reading. The optional side is using some of the Lucy Culkins materials that Mr. Nielsen referenced, and I believe they also do some cafeteria picking out of materials they can access because the other half of the school is using the full program.
Ms. Mitchell.
So are the optional schools, do they still have the same flexibility they had two or three years ago in terms of language arts? Are they, or are they, has their situation changed with the introduction of Cengage Reach for Reading and the priority plan?
No, it hasn't changed, you know, per board policy, optional alternate programs are optional alternate for a reason, so they, of course, can chart their own path for the most part as long as it does follow board policy as to curriculum grading policy. We do have a couple of our programs, Northwood ABC, they did a side-by-side comparison a year or two ago, so they are not using Saxon math, they're using Go Math, and they also made the decision to move forward with the Cengage. But they're, all the alternate optional programs are able to structure their day as they always have been.
So I'll ask a question. One of the things that we hear over and over again is we, you know, some teachers say, yep, I know, my instructional coach, you know, we have good communication with our principal. And then others, when they hear these things, they're like, this is the first time I've ever heard this. And so I guess my question is, what are we doing to better communicate or ask our principals to better communicate with their teachers? And why is there that disconnect?
Well, I'll start with just what I know about large-scale implementation projects, and I, you know, having been through some, I can tell you that communication is always the challenge. It always will be. And so it doesn't surprise me that we've got communication gaps. Those gaps are not district-wide. We've got, you know, we'll talk to the directors, I mean, they can talk to, you know, like, just roughly, like, how many schools are experiencing discomfort with this or that their communication gap is huge. So it's sporadic. It's here, it's here, it's there. But what are we going to do district-wide? We've been videoing, going around, building a case where we can demo what that flexibility can look like. We have cases where there's, you know, one classroom where it's just going great and energized and pacing is good, and then another one where they feel like they can't do that. And what is that? How do we help support that teacher? And so there's some videos that we're putting together. We're working on the writing part of having some of these basic things written down to say, there's where flexibility could lie. So we're doing that. And then, you know, right now, we have a parent night that we've done, some of you were there, so we are processing here soon what, how to debrief and take that to the next level, like, what next could we do with parents? So there's that part of it. But our thought right now is that the communication strategies need to be specific to sites that are experiencing the most challenges. With 66 elementary schools and many of them going, doing fine without issues, I don't know that we would go and mandate that every school do something like we did with our parent night. But I'll stop with that and see if Glenn or any of the directors want to chime in on that.
Well, I'll just jump off, and then I'll ask the directors to add to that. I think of a tale of two schools. I think of Willowah Elementary and we'll say Bear Valley Elementary. Willowah Elementary, from the staff there and from the principal there, I'm getting the request to actually move a little bit faster with the implementation and move into the next series of instruction around the Cengage material and the priority plans because they've been doing it for a while, and they want to continue the work that they feel has been successful, and they don't want to be held back. And then we look at a school like Bear Valley where they have a new principal this year, they're taking a more measured approach. I think that there are still some questions around the efficacy of the program from the staff, and so the principals working really hard to bring them along. And that's just two schools out of 60, so imagine that writ large across the elementary division. I would like to ask Director Milton, she had, she met with her principals last week, and maybe you could share what that experience was like and what they were saying.
Yeah, thank you. After Thursday's evening event, I had a Zoom conference with my principals on Friday and just put forward some of the things, topics that had come up, the concerns that had come up on Thursday, and asked what's going on in your building in, you know, relation to those concerns. And I really appreciated the conversation. They, as a group, we are spending too much time, they said, talking about those negatives. You should be focused on all of these positives. And they went on to say, we have stronger progress monitoring data than we've had in prior years, our student support team meetings are more productive when we're talking about students who are struggling as a result. They said, because we're consistent across our classrooms, they've been struggling, this is a J-Bear school, with substitutes getting on base. They said, oh, my goodness, on a day where we were short three subs, the principal, the coach, you know, all hands on deck, we're able to go in rooms and pick up and continue instruction. They had story after story. They said, sure, you know, sometimes teachers will say, oh, you know, when can I read aloud? And then they work as a team to say, when are you, how are you, how are you, across their team, and share ideas. They talked at length about how they are working with their teachers to use those flex days and creative ways to do it. A full day here, or do they want to break them up so they have a little chunk of time across weeks? It was, it was really rich conversation, and, you know, I wish they were here themselves to tell you all the different examples. But their, their questions at each site are unique to them, and it's not even the whole site maybe, you know, a group, a grade level will be working together, and that's, that's what we want to have happen, is that the teacher, teachers, their principal, their coach are all looking at their students and their situation and problem-solving as they go, but they were pretty jazzed.
Mr. Donnelly.
So as you were giving this example of the, of two schools where they had differences, and one of them was using more of the new curriculum than the other, at some point, we're going to start to get some results back from the new curriculum. And it's going to be very hard to understand them if we don't know which schools fully implemented the new reading curriculum and which schools didn't. We'll need that overfaced, over that data to have any rational decision-making based on it. And I would concur, and I would tell you that is one of the big dilemmas in our business, is trying to figure out whether a program worked or didn't work, or whether we didn't work the program. I mean, those are the two issues that we always have to wrestle with, is, did we do it? And I think there's two terms been used around here. I prefer one over the other, but one firm, term you hear is implementing a program with fidelity, and another term is implementing it with integrity. And they're slightly different. You know, fidelity might be a letter of the law. I'm just going through here, checking my boxes, doing everything. Integrity might be more professional in the sense that my kids already know this, I've tested it, I've checked it, I'm ready to roll, I'm going to extend that, I'm going to go beyond that, I'm going to do something different with it, I'm going to take it to a higher level. And that's, that's teaching with integrity, but not necessarily just fidelity. And so it's a different way, but those discussions have to occur at the site level. And like Heather was saying, a team of third-grade teachers saying, well, how did you do that? You know, like, I didn't think I had the freedom to do that, so tell me how you did that. You had a center? I thought we weren't supposed to do centers. No, we can do centers. Well, where and when do you do them and why? And I do them this way because, you know, those are the professional dialogues that we want to happen, but that does take some time. And, you know, the term we've used over and over is to ask people to try to put forth a good faith effort to implement this until they understand it. Flexibility will come as we understand it better. I think it's Stephen Covey that said, we're after the simplicity on the far side of complexity. I mean, when you first get all this, it looks very overwhelming and very complex. But as they, we get used to it, and we find out where flexibility lies, it will become simple. But we've been at it less than one semester, which is very tough to do something of this magnitude in just, you know, 10, 11, 12 weeks.
I would, I would echo what Ms. Milton said, she's heard from her schools, that that falls in line with much of what I've heard. Another group that I've spoken to, two individuals in this category myself, as well as two different principals who brought attention to it, who I've heard positive things about this from our first-year and second-year teachers, who are still in the portion of their career where they're spending a massive amount of their cognitive resources in making those determinations about what do I do with a limited amount of time? I've had several of them, yeah, who have, who've approached me with the idea that they really appreciated some of the layout of that process and some of the assistance and support they're getting in trying to determine what should and shouldn't be the negotiable portions of it. And I wouldn't want to lose that voice. We have a large number of early-career teachers in our district, and if not that support, there are other supports there that need to be in place to help them with some of those pieces.
Ms. Hildy.
You mentioned, Dr. Stock, that it's been like 12 weeks this year. Did some schools have the program last year? And I guess I'm just confused on who had it last year, who's in their second year with it, and how is that working?
Well, some, of course, had the materials last year. The priority plans were written over the summer and implemented this fall. So like, there's a difference between the Cengage reading materials, the manuals. And so K through 2 had those materials last year in their hands, but they did not have the, the plan that sort of says, these are the things that, that have been scoped and sequenced by our teachers. Our teachers did that, they went through and looked at all of the, the skills that are being tested on our state standards, and they wove those. So they purposely went through the manuals and picked those things that fit that. So that's new this, this year. And 3-5 got all of their materials and their plans this fall.
So just so I'm clear, so K through 2, all K through 2 used Cengage curriculum last year, and then, you know, and then some people tested out the priority plan, and then everybody got the priority plan this year. So it is the second year with the curriculum?
With the materials, yes.
You don't...
For K-2, yes.
Right, right, okay.
I'm going to, I was going to ask Director Bjornson and Wilson to also chime in, but before I do so, I wanted to point out something that Director Milton brought up with that third-grade team at the imaginary school, the school that she was thinking of. And the success that they're having in this kind of speaks to that communication piece, that gap that we might have. Because what will occur is at that school, that third-grade team will be cooking with gas, so to speak. And they'll be sharing maybe what they've done to make the curriculum really work. They've identified the efficiencies, and they are just moving right along. And then imagine it's week, it's the weekend, and they're out with coffee with some other teaching friends from different schools, and they're sharing what they've been doing. And that school, oh, well, we aren't doing that yet, we haven't done that yet. And it could be just for a variety of reasons, that maybe they haven't sat down and taken the time to do the planning, maybe there has been some miscommunication from the principal, but what then that becomes, it's that proverbial snowball going down the hill, it becomes, well, this is not, we're being told at this school, oh, well, then I've heard. It's always, I've heard, I've heard. And I really want to invite individuals when they're out having conversations to take the time to ask those deeper-level questions as to really what was said, how is it said, so then we can start to parse that out. And another thing that, that we want, and Dr. Stock mentioned this, you know, it is with integrity. Just because we have a wonderful product, a wonderful curriculum with priority plans, doesn't absolve us from thinking and making those critical decisions at a school level. We still want that, we want, and that's what I share with the principals, we want to have those conversations, we want to make sure that we are talking about why it was working here, and if we are hearing from my friend I'm having coffee with, and they're sharing what their principal is doing, well, let's have that conversation at my school as well.
Ms. Mitchell.
No, I can just kind of add on to what Director Barker said, and I think he was talking about a very important thing, is you do see a lot of parents and teachers getting worked up over the implementation, over the priority plans, and there's a lot of conversation going on about how this or that can be tweaked. And I think Dr. Stock hit it on the head, is we have to be careful of having those conversations prematurely because a lot of these skills that these students are building are really working at foundational skills. And I think the reading night that we just had on Thursday really opened up a lot of parents' eyes to see what it is that they were really actually working on or being asked to do. So you did see a lot of parents that were worked up, and, you know, some of the parents that I talked to personally after the night was over said, man, if all the parents could see this and be involved in this, I totally understand what the kids are being asked to do and what the teachers are asked to do. So it really took a lot, took a lot of that angst away and a lot of that, I would say, conversation that's been going on in social media and just from person to person, that hasn't been accurate, so.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell.
So I was at the meeting Thursday night, and I thought it was very well done. Thank you for doing that, and I really appreciated that the sessions were taped, and I'm hoping, I just took a look at the ASD website, and we have a link under Hot Topics on About Reading. I'm hoping that those videos can be on there so parents can experience that. And I also see, because I was going to ask about whether we might consider something like a question and answer, because so many parents are asking similar questions and teachers, and have a question and answer bit, and on the website, under that topic, it has a spot for Q and A, and it says, coming soon. So I think that will help a lot. I think communication is really, really key. I have a couple of questions. One, Dr. Stock, when you said that the schools had the materials last year, but it, it made it sound like you were saying they had the materials, but we hadn't rolled out the Cengage yet, so I'm curious about that. And the other question I have is, Mr. Nielsen, you were talking about, I love, too, implementing with integrity. I think that's what our teachers really, you know, they're really prepared for that. And I appreciate the fact that for the newer teachers, this does give them structure, but for the more experienced teachers, you know, hopefully they understand why we're implementing this new curriculum around the new research on how reading acquisition happens for students who aren't natural readers, and, you know, they get that, and so they can use the tools and implement it with integrity based on having that knowledge of why this is based on the new research, but also using their knowledge of their students and that kind of thing. So I really like that, that term. But I, the other question I had was, you mentioned, you just used the two schools as an example, Willowah wants faster implementation, implementation, and Bear Valley not so much. I guess I'm wondering, I, I didn't realize that, like, what pieces of the implementation are they getting that Bear Valley isn't yet? I didn't realize, is the implement, are there chunks of implementation that are coming in, or is, I mean, I don't understand that. I don't know if you understand my question.
I believe I do. And before I answer it, I do want to say thank you for, thanking us for the great presentation last Thursday, but it wasn't anything that Elementary Ed did, it was our wonderful folks from Teaching and Learning, specifically our instructional leads and instructional coaches, that did all the heavy lifting on that one. So I want to make sure we give credit where credit is due. So yes, as a matter of fact, just this last in-service, the elementary schools went through, was it Series B 1 and 2? And so, and then that's, that's about the limit of my expertise on that one. So what would then follow, do we, what follows after Series B 1 and 2?
3 and 5?
See, there we go. That makes perfect sense. I should have known that. Thank you, Laura. So yes, for example, Willowah, because, and like many of our title schools, have been implementing either Ashlock or some sort of priority plan with their instruction already to get the biggest bang of the buck, out of the buck. They feel, the principal does, and some of her staff members, that they are ready to, to move forward a little bit faster than our instructional coaches are with some of our other schools that have not implemented, which I understand because they have been doing it. Now, that's a question for myself and their lead, Mary Beth, to have a greater conversation around, to see if that really is appropriate, but that has been their ask.
So are those additional pieces, sorry, are those additional pieces, are they additional overlays, or are they like the next unit, or?
I need to understand which specifically you're asking. Are you asking about the specific school or all the trains that we've done?
I'm asking, I'm not exactly sure how to formulate the question, and maybe this should be an offline question.
Well, no, I, I kind of would like to, is this like, you know, you have part 1, part 2, I mean, what have we implemented at this point that now we have to implement something else? Or what are we adding to it?
Okay, so last year, all K-2...
Why'd you come, yeah.
Okay. Last year, all of K-2 and many of 3-5, depending upon the school, were trained in what we called the Series A, which were the routine instructional cards. That was the phonics and decoding portion of the implementation program. This year, we're training them in what we call the Series B, which is the comprehension and vocabulary piece. And we've done at this point two workshops, and we're, we've just rolled out our third workshop. So they're very different in how it was rolled out. So you had the phonics and the foundation skills first, and now we're working on the comprehension and vocabulary.
And so what's next? Yeah.
Right.
And so what's the next?
So we're continuing with comprehension and vocabulary throughout this year. And the reason why it was rolled out like that is because K-2 went first, which is where our foundation focus is, and this year is 3-5, which is where our comprehension and vocabulary focuses.
Thank you.
And that's the wonderful and comparable Laura Nevada, she's one of our instructional leads. And if you were here Thursday night, she, along with instructional coach Don Stiles, led the collaboration section, or not the collaboration, but the cooperative learning. Thank you. But you did collaborate.
Yes. Mr. Foster.
Yes. Mr. Foster?
It's live now. Live. At a board governance level, I have some questions that I think may be different than the ones we've heard so far. And I'm asking Dr. Stock, how do we engender trust with the community going forward, given where we're at at this implementation? I don't need the answer. I'm going to run through a series of questions and I want you just to sort of think about each one. And I really don't want the response today. But I think this is the board level sort of question that are important to me. How do we indicate at a board level that we're providing a coherent district approach to align the sites on the curriculum while continuing to support appropriate site innovation? So how do we start out of the block with that and then assure the board that we've got a process in place that creates that space? Third one is, how do we promote a culture that supports innovation and adoption of effective education strategies? I'll provide this in writing to folks, so you don't have to write it down. But you just get the sense of the flavor. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's all written down already. And then finally, I think the balancing act against those general principles are the driving force behind this. And I think it's the thing we've got to be mindful of. And I was reminded of quite clearly by Marcus Wilson, and I want to express my appreciation for his clarity in the why, on why we're driving this. So I want to thank you again for that. How do we ensure high quality teaching and learning so that all students are ensured that they get core reading and writing skills mastery? So they can then basically excel when they get to the ninth grade and when they get to the AP classes? How do we make sure that we get that mastery? And so I think it's those sort of four things. And then here's the board governance question. How do I measure that at a board level? Is it a climate and culture sort of survey during the course of a implementation? How do we measure that? There's a, there's a lot of qualitative information being shared. There's a lot of discussion about what's happening as sites get their feet under them and figure out principals and teachers. But at the board level, how do I measure how well we're doing with that trust and that sort of that site balance between a curriculum and local innovation? Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
And I guess to follow up on that, I would be interested, and this might be a question for Ms. Knutson, I'm not sure who, at what level this happens. But as we roll out programs and have implementation, how do we have the constant feedback on what's working, what's not? How does, what does that process look like? How are we connecting with the troops on the ground who are doing the implementation? And how do we evaluate how the implementation went and what the learning is for next time? And that might be getting more in the weeds than I need to. But I would just be interested in just sort of a, you know, top level, what does that process look like?
Do you want answers now too? Or you want to collect them with Marcus?
We can, yeah.
Well, right now, it's been anecdotal. And with a lot of other things going on, it's been hard to, I mean, one of the things that happens here is we, we survey people to death almost. And that's one of the, one of the challenges we have is trying to figure out how many and where and when to to survey. But so the feedback loops here have been internal and have been through the principals and coaches. They meet regularly and they collect that information from staff and and identify those areas. They communicate it up. And then that goes to the directors. Every one of these directors know exactly which schools are getting the most concerns or questions and know exactly what ones those are. And then that's where we need to focus our attention with the parents, I think, in the beginning, to help answer those faculty and those teachers' questions. But so right now, it's been that way. I mean, we had an opportunity, Dr. Bishop had me meet with a firm that does these kinds of ongoing surveys with all of the other surveys that we've done. We have it on hold right now because of so many other, and also the expense of an, of another three parts survey done empirically to do it well on a scale of our size. It was done last year across Alaska and other districts. But we did not do it because of our size and and also all of the, it was just another consulting contract that we would have had to enter into to to do it at that level.
So what it boils down for me is the kids. And I don't want a parent to come to me and say, my son, which has happened, and for me, myself also, in ninth grade, a teacher tells you that your son is on a fifth grade reading level and nobody has told you that before. That's the bottom, I mean, that's what we're looking for. It's, you know, we can talk about how we're going to get there and everything, but that's what we don't want to happen. And that's what we're trying to prevent, I hope, through everything that we're doing. And it will be interesting to get your answers and see how the district is responding to that. Because bottom line, we're failing our kids. And everything we're doing, I'm hoping, and I have a lot of belief, that this will make a difference. But we need confidence with our teachers. We need confidence with our staff. And I think right now, that confidence or that, because I know that Deana and Ms. Hildy met with teachers and it was standing room only, and they all said the same thing. The communication is not getting to them. And so I think that is the key. And I don't know how we, we can't wait for those schools to come to us. We have to find out what schools they are and we have to go to them. Because there is still that distrust within the district with our administration. And I'm just going to be very blunt about it because our kids can't wait.
And I would tell you right now that we've heard that about the communication and there will be a plan going forward and it will be addressed without any question. The thing I, I guess I just want to come back to is, is we expect our principals to support our teachers in a grace period of understanding how to implement these things. The district has never done a large scale rollout of this, this magnitude this quickly. And we could have done it slower. One of the challenges was, is how long do we wait? We have kids who aren't reading. So we went full bore. And now we're dealing with the, the gaps where those occur and where we certainly know that they exist. And so communication will be something that we've got to shore up here in the next few months and get, get the word out. And we will do so.
I, I know you guys are working on it, so I do appreciate it. But we, it doesn't hurt to be reminded. If we don't have any other questions, I'd like to move to student retention, because we're getting low on time here. And I don't remember which board member was interested in student retention. Mr. Donling?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We currently have a policy, a school district policy about retention. It's a strong presumption of advancement. And there's a committee process that's involved with that. And there doesn't seem to be a formal role for the parents in the policy. Now, so I wanted to learn more about how that policy was implemented and why it shouldn't be changed to a more neutral evaluation instead of a presumption of advancement, just a neutral of what's in the best interest of that individual child and also have a more formal written availability of the parents being involved in it.
That's a, a great discussion. Dr. Bishop and I have had that conversation, knowing that there was some discussion about that. And so there's different schools of thought, I think, as a district, from reading our previous board policy on this topic of, of retention of students. And just to clarify, by definition, when we say retention, we're talking about holding the student back in grade. So if I'm a third grader and I didn't do well, back in the old days, we called it failed the grade, right? But a student is retained in grade, so they repeat third grade. So as a whole, across the country, the research on retention as a policy has not been very favorable in terms of students' later success, in terms of graduation rates, dropout rates, and so on. So across the country, there's been, you know, not a lot of schools doing it. Now, there's been a recent movement from various states now that have been passing state policy that, you know, our third grade is a focus grade here. If a kid is reading on grade level by third grade, their chances to have access to those future ninth grade, those AP classes, that, you know, those, those chances go up when they, when they hit those marks. So there are states that have actually had retention policies put in place that if you don't read on grade level by third grade, you must repeat third grade. Now, what happens is schools don't typically actually retain all those students. But the pressure is there. So what they do is they engage the parents, they engage the school, and, and they implement their, what we call our multi-tiered system of support, the MTSS, tier one, tier two, tier three. So there's an all out effort, a full court press on that child to try to get that child to reading, which means sacrifices have to be made. In some of those states, kids are pulled from a science class or a social studies class and they're giving this very detail, they're tutored before school, after, whatever it takes. But the goal is to get those students to that level of proficiency. And so there's a, a pressure there. So our policy typically is stated in the terms of we don't really retain a lot of kids. It's kind of how, how the past policy in practice was. I've read some of your proposed language, you know, there's certainly nothing wrong with a policy that would encourage parents to be part of this process and engage in that discussion. You can't go wrong getting parents at the table to try to talk about, as, as President Marsette said, if a student's not reading and nobody ever told me, that, that's a problem. So we should do that. And so having that in there, and, and I did read some language that you'd looked at about where proficiency would be one of the considerations. It doesn't say if he doesn't pass a gr, you know, he has to retain. But it says, and there's certainly nothing wrong with having that conversation. At our levels, we haven't discussed it with everybody all the way down the academic team. But at our levels, having that policy discussion certainly is worth having. And I don't think we would shy away from it. It's hard to have a hard and fast policy, though, that says if you don't read on grade level, you're going to be retained. There's too many other factors that play into that. But, but certainly involving parents in that discussion and saying that proficiency will be a, a, something that is discussed or considered is certainly nothing wrong with that.
Ms. Don, did you have a follow up?
Well, thank you for acknowledging that, Dr. Stock, that the proposal I did submit to the governance committee wasn't an absolute. It was based on what's the individual evaluation, what's best for the child with the parent's participation in that. So it's unlike the ones in those states that say, you don't pass this test, you don't advance. It's not that. I'm just trying to move towards a more neutral evaluation rather than the presumption being so strongly in favor of advancing, even if they're not at that academic level yet.
Right.
So that we don't get a cascading effect over a series of years where we end up with kids in high school that can't read.
Right.
Mr. Holloman?
And I guess I just want to put this as a caution to the board. If we, if we promote this or we encourage this.
Speaking to your microphone.
Sorry. If we began more aggressively retaining students, which I think has some pluses and has some negatives, there'll be certain schools that retain more students than any other school. And the question is, do we then look on those schools as failures? Or do we look on them as vanguards of a policy that we, we think is positive? I mean, when the idea of retaining students and working with them intensively if they don't have skills to advance, I think makes a lot of sense. I think a lot of people feel good about that. But I also feel pretty confident that whichever school has the most retained kids, we're going to point to and say, what's your problem? And I, it, it's the other side of the data coin, in a way. Are we, and, and it comes from looking at what we've done with student test scores. We have moved beyond just using them to identify which students are doing well. We now also use them to identify which schools we think are doing well, or which districts are doing well, or which states are doing well. And I, a part of the latitude of letting people exercise their professional judgment is going to be when they turn up issues, are we going to treat them as pariahs for doing it? Because we have at times.
Mrs. Hildy and then Dr. Stock.
And I'm just wondering, you know, already in the policy, our teachers can have these meetings and this collaborative process. And while I think having parents purposely invited, I imagine many show up to this committee process. So we can already retain a student if the teacher in their judgment is saying this kid is not ready for whatever factor. I would imagine there's behavioral factors and maturity factors or academic factors that all get weighed into that. Maybe you could just talk a little bit on what that existing process looks like?
Well, there's a couple of different parts. Typically, you know, there, there is the conversation that does currently occur with the parent when it comes to an actual retention. We very rarely get parents who ask to have their students retained in grade, but it does happen occasionally. We typically have in the past talked about the, the research on what happens when that happens. There are instruments that principals over the years have used, different scales, that they weigh factors of different things, from maturity to health, to this, to that. And they use those as a, as, there's one called the Light Retention Scale. There are different instruments that principals have used to try to weigh out the factors before they would recommend that. We don't recommend it very often. And I guess what I would like us to do in closing on this topic is to think about retention in a much different sense. Students, what we're asking is for students to be retained this week, today. If I didn't understand a verb today, what has the teacher or the grade level or the school done to try to help me catch up with that before I have to repeat a whole grade? So part of what we're doing with our reading curriculum and our retirement, yes, we do some whole group instruction for the purpose of efficiencies to get more student responses in. But if a student isn't making it, then it's my duty. Or if a student is doing it really, really well, what do I do to extend that or to repeat it? So that, whether that's through small groups, we have our win groups where a student would then be given extra help, which is a form of a, let's call that a retention. I'm retained this week to get some extra help with whatever it is I'm not doing well. But it's not waiting till an entire year is over and then saying, repeat everything you just did for a whole year. You might repeat what you did this week. And so that's good pedagogy is to, for the school. But these differences are so wide, the reason we have a school-wide schedule and a school-wide curriculum is because these needs have gotten so diverse and great that individual teachers are, are overwhelmed in trying to handle the variances inside their classrooms. And school, an individual teacher today can almost hardly ever meet those range of needs without extra help, whether it's a win group, whether it's tutoring, whether it's whatever you want to call it. But you've got to turn over every rock to try to find ways to, to support those kids. So it's not as simple as just holding kids in grade for a year. But those discussions do occur.
Ms. Hildy?
Thank you. And I appreciate that, you know, retained this week, right? We don't, we want mastery before we go on to the next, so they don't fall behind. How do we as a board see that happening? How do we know that's working from your perspective?
Well, from my perspective, I would hope by this time next year, when we get our win groups fully functional, when everybody is getting, you know, we have pockets where some of the schools are pretty well developed at doing that and others are still slowly coming along with it. When we see our enrichment groups for win really humming, some of those issues in those schools where those parents that have been coming to us are upset, thinking that, oh, my kid already knows how to read. Why would he need to do phonics? You know, that's been one of those, those questions. Or, you know, where, where's the enrichment and acceleration? So once, I think, once we get those fully functional, you'll see better examples of that in the school district. But right now, that's, for some of the schools, it's still in infancy stages.
Ms. Hildy?
Sorry, last question. So for example, next year, when we see, you know, when, I understand the rollout part, would we see information saying this school has 12 high level win groups and they, will we see some level of breakdown? Or how will you know what has changed or improved?
Well, the principals and the coaches will know. But that's a great discussion as to, should the district do anything more formally to try to track that at the whole district level with regards to how many win groups are going, how many of them are enrichment? You know, if you remember that schedule, you remember the colors, green... You know, if you remember that schedule, you remember the colors, green and blue and red and yellow, infamous colors, right? You remember those descriptions of the WIN block, but that, that would not take too long to survey, again, our principals, and, uh, try to get some data collected on what that looks like in schools, because we do have some schools right now where virtually, I mean, eighty, ninety percent of the student body is in, or in, uh, a remedial WIN group, not an enrichment. Okay? So, and the schools that, that have a lot of more enrichment, um, you know, fifty percent or more in the enrichment, that's still kind of, it's in infancy stages of really getting some, our long-term vision is that that's exciting stuff. I'm going down to do robotics, or I'm doing, uh, advanced music and, you know, art and music, or art and hit, you know, uh, writing, uh, things that are, you know, exciting and passionate and extend, but that's, that's where we'll get to. But, again, this comes in stages, and right now, we're still bogged down in getting this tier-one level implementation of the reading curriculum at a base level in place, and that will take a year or so.
So, my only concern is when we talk about retention, um, and again, I have too much experience as a parent, but I've had other parents come to me, and, um, their wishes are not exactly, um, it's a fight for them, if they want to have their child retained, because they, you know, I think parents know best. And the district can, or the teacher or principal can give them all the reasons, but I really think it's up to the parent if they want to retain their child or not. Um, I know just, well, I'm, I've had other, other parents come to me and talk about this, and, and the difficulties they've had working with staff to be able to do what they thought was best for their student, and then I also experienced it when I held my own son back in first grade, and, um, you know, pretty much I just put my foot down, but, um, it would be nice to be able to give, uh, the parents, um, I guess, that ability to make that decision, if that, if they're, I mean, after you've talked to them and everything, and they're still very adamant about that, I mean, basically, it's their child, and I think that we have to say, parents know what best for their children, unless we're going to say, we know better than they do.
Well, I would say, for the most part, in most cases, um, we do listen to the parents pretty routinely on those things. We do a, a good job trying to, um, share all the information and research available, but in the end, most of the time, our parents, I mean, prevail when it comes to that, because they do know their students, and, and, um, you know, we might share all the reasons why we wouldn't recommend it, but in the end, parents will generally get to do what they need to do.
Ms. Hildy?
Um, and just kind of along those same lines, is there any limitation for pre-K holding back? I think that's where I hear a member of Marsette's issue come up the most for me. A, a pre-K parent, special ed generally doesn't want their child having to go into kindergarten yet, but maybe the child just turned five, and, um, they'd rather than wait till they're six to start kindergarten. Is there any rule about that, or is it still the analysis part?
It's still analysis, and then, um, sitting down and working with them, I mean, mo- many parents, myself included, uh, had a child that I kept, uh, one more year of preschool before moving into kindergarten, just because, well, he's a boy, and, uh, sometimes our boys have other interests, but you know, as a, but, so, uh, those are individual parent decisions, yep.
Mr. Donley?
Time wise. So, Dr. Stock, since our current policy, and I would portray it as a strong presumption in favor of, of advancement, um, you think that's accurate?
I do.
Yeah. What would be the danger of going to a more neutral policy, instead of not having a presumption either way, but saying, let's leave it up to the, the educators and the experts and the parents involved to make a case-by-case decision based on what's best for that individual child?
I don't think there's anything wrong with that, and I would also say that if we, I, I mean, I'm not a betting man, but I'm thinking if we don't get after the reading issue with some degree of success, uh, we may end up with a state legislation that starts to mandate things like this. I mean, there was an attempt made last year to have some bills that, that it kind of addressed some of that, uh, other states have had that. Um, I don't think there'd be anything wrong with that. I, you know, like I said, I briefed it with Dr. Bishop, and we're both in agreement that I think we could, you know, work with something that is certainly more neutral, if it's that, if that's the board's wishes, because we, we believe that there could be some benefit to that.
Ms. Mitchell?
So I, I think that these are really good discussions, and I think it is important for parents to talk to the educators and, and discuss all these things and have some flexibility. My concern, and I think you alluded to this when you started, is that if a kid is going to be retained and do exactly what they did the previous year, we have to be able to do something differently, because they are going to check out and, and be bored. So it, it does put another level of complexity on the district and ask them to, you know, for somebody who's repeating third grade, come up with something different for them.
Yep.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, uh, based on time, I'm going to move to math. Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, Ms. Foster?
Picking up on what Dr. Stock mentioned, I think we should anticipate legislation this coming session to presume retention if they don't pass proficiency, and I want to encourage the board to think about how they want to prepare for that, and encourage the administration to prepare for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster, I totally agree with you. Um, I think we'll see some other things too, some mandates. Um, so at this point, if we can move forward with the math update, and I know, Mr. Donley, I believe you're the lead on this also.
Well, I asked a similar question about a year and a half ago, and, um, what I was really trying to get at at that time was, what's the success of our current math curriculum versus some of the more traditional math curriculums like Saxon? How is GoMath doing versus Saxon? To really understand whether we want to stay with something like GoMath that's based on a Common Core compliance, because we do have some of our, well, some of our best-performing schools aren't utilizing GoMath, and in fact, at those schools, the kiddos have to be instructed on how to test under GoMath. So they're actually taking time out from their academic year to be instructed on how to utilize the GoMath terminology in the testing, and they're still doing really good. And so, it just begs the question of, of how good is GoMath versus something like Saxon?
So, um, we've, we're, we don't have the results for you tonight, but we have seen, um, some preliminary information with regards to that. There has been a, a study done that, and, and where it's a little problematic is trying to do it on a truly matched student basis, but, uh, we can come back to you with that at a, at a later time, but we have done some research on the schools that are using the Saxon math program with, uh, GoMath, so we'll come back to that at another time. Um, the, the information that was prepared for tonight addresses overall math, and the assessment update is kind of a continuation of the, of, you know, we did reading last time, so we're prepared to, to touch on math as a whole, but that pilot study is, I have seen some preliminary data on it, so we'll come back.
Okay, well, let's take the lead then.
Okay. So, uh, we'll move through this very quickly. You remember the Destination 2020, and as you know, uh, ninety percent of our students will be proficient in reading, writing, and math, and so tonight, we're going to touch on math. And so, uh, real quickly, we went through this the last time, but it does show you some of the cognitive and non-cognitive kinds of things that can impact the district. Uh, the one that has drawn the most attention there is the economically disadvantaged piece that shows fifty-three percent, so that was, uh, something we shared last, last time. Uh, in terms of standards, you remember from our last report that they changed in 2012, uh, the Common Core state standards, and we adopted the Alaska state standards the same year. So I think the key takeaway for that slide is just that they've become more rigorous uh, in terms of, of the teaching standards. Not all of the teaching practices were able to change with that at the same time, because they usually come along slower and behind those standards, but you all remember the, the ranking of our standards. In 2017, we did drop some to twenty-second, but you remember this from last time. So our standards overall have been given a, a grade of B-plus now, which is a little lower than it was the last time, but it does show that Alaska has made an effort to upgrade the rigor of its standards. So in terms of district assessments in math, I want to touch base real quickly on the first one here, which is the MAP assessment, the measurement of academic progress. Uh, I think you're all aware that this test is, is computer adaptive, so that means if I'm a, a fourth grader, um, and I do well on it, it might move me right into fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth grade materials, and try to see where I kind of top out at. And it tries to find that sweet spot where they're getting about half their items right, and then I kind of know this may be sort of what I would call an instructional zone where the, the student can perform at. But the same thing happens, it goes down. If I'm a fourth grader, it might move down into third and second grade to find out where I, I level out. So, on terms of growth, um, we had sixty-five percent of our fourth graders meet or exceed typical growth. Now, this is deceiving, so I need to explain that. Now, with Language Arts or Reading, you remember it was thirty-six percent, which is really low, given the standard I'm about to share with you. So when a fourth grader takes the, their test in the fall, they get this score called a RIT score, and then they take it again in the spring, and we calculate how much change they had. And then we go look at students around the nation who started at the same score, and then we calculate and say, well, typical growth for that student is four RIT score points, and he grew eight. So he's doubled the amount of typical growth, he's definitely exceeded it. But if I'm a fourth grader and I'm performing at the second grade level, it still compares me to other students at the second grade level, and it says, for a fourth grader at the second grade level with this RIT score, they grew two points and you grew one point. So you did not exceed typical growth for that student. So, the reason I'm pointing this out is that sixty-five percent meeting or exceeding looks great, but that's including kids that might be two grade levels below in their comparison. So, compared to the next slide, which talks about PEAKS, PEAKS is a proficiency test. It's only looking at, at fourth grade, that's it, doesn't give you fifth, sixth, or second grade material. So, in this case, in terms of on-grade level material, forty percent of our students were proficient or advanced at fourth grade. And so in terms of the other big five districts, you can see that, uh, how we compared to the rest of those. So that's the PEAKS fourth grade. We picked fourth grade, not third, because the NAEP scores, our fourth grade math, is a fourth grade score, the third grade PEAKS scores are, are a big part of that accountability plan that Dr. Bishop shared, that's why we used the third grade reading. So looking at the PEAKS from a school perspective, instead of an individual student perspective, we ranged from seven percent proficiency in one school to ninety-one percent in another school. So, just like we did with the reading, quite a large difference there in terms of that. Uh, thirty-two of our sixty-nine had a, a rate of fifty percent or lower, and so, you may remember from reading at third grade, we had one school that hit the eighty percent level. At math and PEAKS, we had ten schools that got to the eighty percent level.
Uh, a quick question about the schools. Is this general, gen ed schools, or does this include all schools?
It's all schools.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, so there would be charter schools mixed in there and everything. It doesn't, however, sort out a optional school within a school, so like, you know, a school that might have an optional program and a regular public school section in a neighborhood school, it doesn't split that, it's simply the school.
What I'm really asking is, does this include, like, McLaughlin, say, um, schools for, for kids that are private?
Uh, don't think it includes those. Just, it's this, this here is just grades three and five, yes. I, I forget, failed to mention that. Yeah, sorry.
Some of our kids are.
So, right. So in terms of classrooms, the, the reason this is up there, because this has been a topic of discussion, some people have questioned this statistic, like, how meaningful is it? And I get that, but, so, a lot of the discussion has focused on the classroom, the classroom teacher, you know, all of those things. So one of the things that we look at, if we're going to get to ninety by 2020, the goal is, is that's only going to happen classroom by classroom, school by school. So how are we doing classroom by classroom? So that is the question. So if we looked at four hundred and fifty-eight classrooms in grades three through five, we did have fourteen percent or sixty-four of those classrooms who hit that eighty percent proficiency level. And so, that, that shows you, that's kind of the target that we've been using, even though ninety by 2020 says ninety percent, um, eighty is more in line with our tier-one multi-tiered model, which says the goal, I mean, the utopian goal is to get every classroom to that eighty percent level. And so, you know, how does a school structure for schools and classrooms and grade levels where they're not making that? So, next slide.
Ms. Hildy?
I just have a little concern about that. I get that it happens classroom by classroom, but I would hate to be the teacher with twelve kids who are really struggling this year, and then I'm told my classroom is the, you know, the only one in the building that's not good. Does that mean I'm a bad teacher, or, you know, what, um, how is that shaped?
Um, it isn't shared, this is simply a district-wide, uh, global level for us in terms of tracking trends. So, we haven't ranked the classrooms or done anything that would, that, you know, because classrooms change, you know, and, and those of you that have taught know that, that as years go by, you get different levels of classrooms and different groups of kids, and so, I mean, there's variance there. But this just shows how many classrooms, since that's been kind of a big topic, is, is the classroom.
Mr. Foster?
Dr. Stock, I want to encourage your consideration of the word aspirational goal as opposed to utopian.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it more accurately captures the board's sentiment.
Yeah, I will, I will stand corrected, I, yes, I will accept that correction.
And so, I apologize, but I do need fifteen minutes, um, time for a board discussion on, on, uh, something of importance, and so, I know we have some questions, and I hate to rush anybody, but if, and if we have to extend this, we will.
So, let me, um, real quickly, NAEP, uh, just point out one fact, uh, we're at two thirty, the, the rest is state national average at two thirty-nine, as far as ranking, that puts us fiftieth. There were District of Columbia and Puerto Rico that had, uh, enough results to be on the list, but, uh, we were fiftieth in reading, we're also fiftieth in math, although in reading, Puerto Rico did not have enough results to qualify, so, still at the fiftieth, and that's where we are in terms of math at fourth grade. So with that, I want to turn it over to Christina Bellamy, and Christina is, uh, our dynamic, uh, director of the, of curriculum over in Teaching and Learning Department, so I'm going to let her talk about the math plan real quickly. Sorry to leave you so little time.
And actually, um, to start us off, we have Amanda Bar here, she is our district math coordinator.
I will be pretty brief, um, just want to do a quick, um, update. Uh, GoMath was adopted January twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen, as part of a two-phase process. Uh, phase one was with, um, members, thank you, we had educators review sixteen programs that were submitted, they chose the top three programs, were Envision, GoMath, and Math in Focus, which is a, like, Singapore math program. Um, they made a unanimous, unanimous vote to support GoMath at that time, so that was what was adopted.
Could I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Were there any limitations on conforming with Common Core, having to choose one that was a Common Core compliant?
Um, as part of the.
The ones they could choose from.
As part of the submission, or to choose from?
Yeah.
I'm, I don't know if I can answer.
So while neither Amanda nor I were here at that time, in our, in our rules, um, I do know that the district did, uh, adopt the Common Core, um, as being the, um, basis for the instructional focuses for the district, so it would be my expectation that if we were to go back and look in, that the Common Core potentially was one, but we can follow up on that question for you.
So I bring that up because there are other programs out there that aren't Common Core compliant, that might be very successful in getting our kiddos doing better.
Right, so noted. I think one of the things, um, that's just, in looking at the information that we have available to us relative to the sixteen programs that were reviewed, um, they were reviewed according to a criteria, again, we can follow up on that, um, with you, um, and so those criterias what widowed it down to the top three, and then those three, again, were based on a criteria to determine whether or not they would be successful. Part of what, um, also is looked at is, is, is it a research-based program, and, and, um, does it provide? And does it provide opportunities for students within the program? But we can, again, bring you that information. We have to dig for it a little bit, but we can find it.
And I can look for, there, there were three different parts to the rubrics for evaluations.
Can we let them get through the presentation and then ask questions?
I need a re- question.
Okay.
Do you know if Saxon Math was one of the 16 original?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
So after the review, which was a K-8 review, which is why Go Math and Big Ideas were both adopted at the same time, they were recommended because they were based from the same publisher who, who considered those two programs to be a comprehensive K-8 program. They, the strengths included that it offered the balanced approach between computation and conceptual understanding, which was one of the shifts for the Common Core. The online support for teachers and parents was considered a strength, as well as the support for ELL students and parents. And the fact that Go Math was a consumable textbook was considered, considered a strength because it would allow to move towards those Common Core-aligned materials, as well as making the smoother transition to digital textbooks.
So following the adoption decision, an implementation plan was put into play. In year one, all, all teachers, grades K through sixth, received a minimum of three hours of intentional training around not just how to utilize the materials, but the shifts in the teaching practice that required, that was required at that time within the Common Core. There's some shifts in pedagogy, and I think Dr. Stock mentioned that earlier, that of course, sometimes we get the materials, but then we also have to then implement teaching, learning for the teachers, for the pedagogical shifts. Starting in year two, what that looked like was then school-based support. So people that were in, you know, Amanda's position and teacher experts were available to the schools to then come in and do some either side-by-side coaching, modeling, and further instruction, adult instruction, adult learning rather, around honing skills to be successful with students and with the materials. Additionally, each summer since that adoption, we have offered at the Summer Academy, which is a professional learning academy for our staffs here in the ASD, various differentiated courses that teachers can select to, to take part of, to further their teaching practice as well. And so when we look at this within a multi-tiered system of support, 60 minutes is what's allotted for all elementary math, and it is our expectation that those 60 minutes in working with Mr. Nielsen's department are provided. In addition, looking then at Tier Two, there are some opportunities for students to, I'd hate to use the word remediate, but if they do need some support there or to accelerate, there are opportunities in some computer-based interventions that are provided. And looking at then moving into the middle school, so sixth grade and then middle school, there's actually been some really interesting learning happening with the adults in our system, and I'll let Amanda talk to you about that.
So we've actually really focused on our tiered support in grades seven through nine this year. We've got a four-part series that we're training teachers of our Tier Two and Tier Three courses. These courses were actually designed with teacher input based on the content of the courses and the criteria for student placement into the courses. These courses also have a digital component to support students, both for intervention and then acceleration as needed. And again, that, that series, we're focusing on teaching practices and looking at the standards for mathematical practice, which are another component of the Common Core standards. And then just wanted to share with you an upcoming exploratory opportunity that we are sharing with the Council for Great City Schools in conjunction with Dr. Harold Astorius. He's the director for the Center of Mathematics Excellence and Equity at UC Berkeley. They're going to work with us at the end of this month to help build capacity around those standards for mathematical practice in our district.
So, okay, Ms. Hildy.
I'll be quick. Thank you so much. So I just wanted to talk about Go Math from a parent perspective for, to answer some of Mr. Donnelly's concerns, because my kids use Go Math, and I love it. And all year long, I've been telling my husband, "This is Singapore Math, this..." And so when you said it today, I was like, "Oh, all right, validated." But it is watching the conceptual. Now, my husband went to school 70s, early 80s, and he's like, "I don't understand this." I'm like, "No, look how exciting we're doing the reasoning, right? Because we have calculators, and it really breaks apart the reasoning." So I, the rigor of it, I'm very excited with. Some of the skills my second grader learns, you know, I remember learning in a third grade GT class, or, you know, and it was a special skill. And now that all of our students are getting it, I mean, I get so excited doing homework. So, so it is essentially, you know, if you get a Singapore Math book, and perhaps your kids have used it, summer stuff, it's very similar to that. Surprisingly so that we were doing a workbook, and then her homework was literally the workbook the next week. It was, it was unbelievably aligned, so, just from a parent perspective.
Okay, go ahead.
And the only last part that I wanted to say is that we, of course, you know, follow state statute, and so in looking at our math program, we're due for review, and that will be starting next year of elementary mathematics. We'll be looking more holistically and in-depth at the successes of the program and where our needs lie, so.
Okay, I think if we have, I know I have a couple of questions, quickly.
What was our standing when we adopted this curriculum, as far as our students' performance on the national level, and what's our standing now?
We can come back with that information, absolutely.
And the thing I want to share with you, Mr. Donnelly, is I was here when we switched those over, there was such an outcry from our parents and the community that they absolutely did not like the curriculum we had before, and that was one of the reasons the change came about. So, yeah. Anyway, thank you, ladies. We may have you back, depending on if we have more questions, but thank you very much. So what I wanted to talk about very quickly is, discussion has come up about our work sessions, and when we have them, people are feeling that the day is too long. It's been suggested that we either move them to another day, or we have board meetings one week, work sessions the next week. I just want to have the open discussion with the board on what they would like to do.
May I press it?
Yes.
Maybe you could just explain that the Finance Committee starts at 2:30 in the afternoon, and so that these days, currently, for a lot of the board members, run from 2:30 to whenever things end at night.
Right. So the, if, and we don't have Finance Committee meetings every Monday, but when we do, it would make it like, let me see. So the way it would work is we'd have executives that we'd have to come in, open the session at 6, go into executive session, and then come out and do our board meeting. What I'd like to do is move the executive session to 5 and have our board meeting at 6, if we can, if that's agreeable. And then we could have our, instead of it being, we could have a shorter night, I guess, for people that want to come. And we could move our work session to a Tuesday of the same week, or we can move it to the following week. I'm just, this is just something I'm throwing out there because I've heard different things, and so I just want some board input on, do you want to move it? Do you want to keep it the same? Is there any recommendation?
I'm pretty flexible, but I do think that sometimes it is a long day, and there's a lot of information that we often absorb at work sessions. And I've also, I think, talked to a couple of you about, I'd also love to do sort of a model like the legislature does with Lunch and Learns, where we have more in-depth learning about different topics, because I know I personally could benefit from that, or some cool idea that one of us has heard about. So I think maybe having the work session on a different day would allow for that. And sometimes I feel like, you know, it depends on the time of year and what's going on, but sometimes I do feel like the executive session is a little bit tight as well. So maybe separating them out on different days would give us a little more breathing space there if we did want to start a little bit earlier on a day that we know there's going to be a long executive session.
Ms. Hildy.
I, I would like to put work session on a separate day. I, you know, right now, I'm thinking Go Math, like, I'm just super excited about it, but I really want to be focused on what we really, the important things we have to talk about tonight. And so for my brain, I, hard for me to switch back. I don't, maybe other people don't have that struggle. If, if we have the exec session at 5, I just wondering when that focus on staff and students, so parents can come after work, if you have exec session at 4:30, and then we could keep that still at 5:30, same as it starts? I don't know.
Say that again, I didn't...
So exec session would start at 4:30. We'd have to just start an open, public meeting, go to exec session, and then come out, and then it'd be focus on staff and students at the same time, right? That's at 5:30 now. And then the board meeting would be able to start an hour early at 6. And I think that would hopefully encourage people to come, having them not go so late as well.
Okay. Any other suggestions, comments on the suggestions that have been suggested? Well, let me do this. Let's take a straw poll. How many people want to keep it the same, and how many people would like to consider changing it? And we'll just, if you want to change it, raise your hand. If you want to keep it the same, keep your hand down.
This is for changing?
Mm-hmm.
I'm staying from either row. I'm not sure if I'm going to get it through to the group.
I'm going to raise my hand. So, and I know that makes it difficult because some of our board members, that would mean two days for them instead of one, so I apologize, always. But, so then that'll be the task. If you guys have suggestions, submit them to me, and we will consider them at that time. Does that sound good? Okay, thank you. At this time, it's our favorite time of the meeting, and remember, Ms. Mitchell, we have
All right, so this is our favorite part of the meeting, for those that are new. Oh, guess we'll wait. I'm trying to s, I don't reckon. Is Michelle Carton here? Is Michelle here? I don't reckon, I don't recognize her.
So I'm just going to say, I'm assuming that's a football team. I saw a football come in with you. It's not a basketball team, right?
I'm Mark Stock. I'm the deputy superintendent on behalf of Dr. Bishop. And so this is the favorite part of the meeting, for those of you that are new. The board instituted this a number of years ago to try to recognize the people who make Anchorage School District great. And so Mike Graham, our academic, chief academic officer, and I are going to split these up. I'm going to take the first two, and we're, I'm going to do the adults. And Mr. Graham is going to tackle the, no, he's not going to tackle the students, okay? Not with his group back here, he's not tackling anybody. So we'll start with, is Michelle Carton here tonight? I didn't see her. I'm going to go ahead and read this, but Michelle Carton was, is from Tudor Elementary School, and she was named the 2018 Scholastic Librarian Champion of Civic Engagement. Tudor Elementary is among 20 of the most diverse elementary schools in America, and librarian, Michelle Carton, was bringing Global Education to the youngest students at Tudor. As an elementary school librarian and the founder of Global Education Alaska, Michelle empowers her students to become responsible, engaged citizens of the world through projects such as creating videos that encourage kindness and sustainable development. During Peace Week International, her students video conference with schools all around the world as a key initiative to engage in conversations beyond their community. Michelle also won the Follett Challenge this spring, earning Tudor Elementary $60,000 in books and video production equipment for the students to learn and produce their own newscasts and update their library. Congratulations to Michelle Carton. We wanted to thank her for sharing her passion and inspiring students. She makes ASD great. Larissa Wright Elson. Larissa, would you step forward? Larissa is the Anchorage School District's English and Language Arts Curriculum Coordinator. She has been named the 2018 PBS Digital Innovator All-Star for the State of Alaska. Larissa holds a master's degree in educational technology, is a Google for Education certified trainer, and is nationally board certified in adolescents and young adult English language arts, and an all-around good person. Her experience includes, yeah. Her experience includes 18 years in the classroom, teaching students in grades seven through 12, writing curriculum, and supporting teachers with technology integration. Each of the Digital Innovator All-Stars was selected from a cohort of extraordinary educators who are doing innovative work in their schools and their districts. The PBS Digital Innovator All-Stars will spend 2018, 2019 deepening engagement among students, families, educators, schools, and their local PBS stations. Congratulations to Larissa for being named the 2018 PBS Digital Innovator All-Star for the State of Alaska. Oh, okay. Michelle, did you, here we go. Come on down. We read all these really great things about you that you didn't get to hear, so we'll leave these for you to get to read. But we want to thank Michelle, you heard all the great things that she's done at Tudor Elementary, and we want to acknowledge your greatness for helping make ASD great.
And Michelle, I'll say that I was at your celebration, and the things that they were doing was just amazing. I was so happy to be part of that. Thank you.
Did you get your picture right? Thank you, Michelle. Okay, and to follow up now, the West High tennis team, if you're here, come on up. I think I saw some orange and black walk in. All the way forward, so everybody can see you. Okay. The West High tennis team is your 2018 Division One State Champions this year, so congratulations to them for that. That's why they are here. And to let you know just a couple things about them, the West won the 2018 regular season 12-0 with an 8-1 win in the semifinals against Service and a 7-2 win in the finals against South. Coached by Bill Cotton, Ben Larson, and Sinclair Jackson... Coached by Bill Cotton, Ben Larson, and Sinclair Jackson, West dominated the other Anchorage teams, winning at Regions as well as at State. West tennis has won 13 of 15 conference titles since 2004, the majority of Region titles, and seven of the 12 State titles since the State Tournament started in 2007. So congratulations to your State title. Your hard work and dedication have paid off. You guys definitely make ASD great. But before we're done, got to hear a couple of things about, I mean, I saw the final score. You guys are just amazing what happened at State. But if you're coach, you want to say anything about this team?
Oh, not yet. Teddy used to.
Okay. Teddy.
Take the mic.
Okay.
Hold it close.
Okay. We just had a really good year. We had really good coaches. He got Coach of the Year because he's really good. Yeah. And hopefully, I'm graduating, so they won't have me next year, so it's going to be rough. But I feel like West can pull it off again. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Mike, do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Anybody else?
Anybody else got something you want to say about your team this season? Your coach?
West is the best.
I'm not sure the whole room would agree with you, but you are in tennis this year, that's for sure. In tennis, they are. Okay, let's get together closely, so he can try and get you guys in a picture here. Okay, congratulations one more time to West High Tennis Team. And now we'd like to ask for the East High T-Birds Football Team. Come on up. Okay, we'll move over for this one. I don't know how we're going to get this picture, but. So in front of you, you have the East High Thunderbirds, who won the Cook Inlet Football Championship, and then went on to earn the distinction of this year's first National Bowl Division One State Champions. So congratulations to East High. So a little bit about their season. The East High Football Team had an outstanding season of 10 wins and only one loss, and went undefeated in the State of Alaska. This is the second State Championship crown that the East High T-Birds have earned in three seasons. Throughout the season, East High was dominant on many levels, especially defense, where East only allowed an average of nine points per game. And I saw some of the scores, so that's a, that's a pretty amazing average. In the State Championship game, East reigned supreme. According to head coach Jeff Trotter, who's standing right next to me, it's been a while since a State champion has dominated in the fashion that this team was able to do. The State Championship team is defined by a sense of family and the outstanding leadership from the coaching staff and the players as well. According to Coach Trotter, one of the things the team is most proud of is the players set out to create a legacy at East, and that's exactly what they accomplished. So congratulations to your win at State and bringing the title back to East High. You make ASD great, and quite frankly, I hired Coach Trotter for East High, so you make me look pretty good, too. Congratulations. Here, Coach, got something to say?
Glad I made you look good there. One thing, you know, this, this team is pretty special. We, there's quite a bit of athletes up here, and it's really hard. We're the most diverse school in the nation, and, you know, sometimes it's hard when you look around, and some of the climate on how people need to work together, where I think we're a good subset of what can do, or what can happen when you do that. So, you know, that, this team has been great. We went off family, and the leadership on the field was probably the best I've seen in 26 years of coaching. It was like having other coaches on the field. So we couldn't be happier for the players and the other coaches. They worked their butts off. Really special year, appreciate it. And we've got a couple footballs, one for Ms. Bishop, but she's not here.
We will get it to her.
And one for the man that was crazy enough to give me a chance in the first place.
Would anybody like to speak? Do we have any captains that would like to say something?
You got your captains? Is someone want to say something here? This is your chance.
Hard work pays off. Okay, so to the younger classmate, it's up to you guys now. Hey, go in that weight room, do that work.
Okay, about how you're making this picture work?
Okay, go East.
Okay, back up, guys.
Okay, we can get a few more up here. Okay. You guys got to come in this way. There you go. Okay, ready on three? One, two, three. Okay, hang on one more. Last one, ready on three? One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, that's who makes East High great for now. Excuse me, who makes ASD great for now? Ooh, sorry.
This time, if I could have Ms. Mitchell come back to the table so that we can move into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of...
Then let's do them. Yeah, okay. Okay, hold on.
All right, Diamond Flag Football, come on up. I'm going to let you talk about this season. I somehow don't have my piece of paper in front of me, so I'm very embarrassed, but I know you had one heck of a season, and you won it all, which was not unexpected because you'd won all season long.
We, we had one loss. We, we went 16-1, and we lost that game to West, the first regular season game to West, and then ended up playing West in the championship game and beat them 21 to, 26 to 6. Had a great, great group of girls. We, we were pretty heavy senior-wise, but these girls are, the three girls up here are all seniors, and so we're going to miss a lot of our captains and a lot of our players, but Diamond has had a tradition. We've won seven of the 13 years at flag football. I've coached all 13 years. I'm thankful that they added flag football. It's been a lot of fun, and Diamond has traditionally built a strong program, and we're very proud of these girls. Unfortunately, some are, we had some injuries, some just had surgery. One's having surgery tomorrow, couple of knee injuries, which is unfortunate. Things going on tonight. I'm sure they're studying because they're pretty good academically as well. But we're pretty proud of them, and I'll let these three girls introduce themselves and say a few words.
I'm Davion Rob, and I don't have anything to say.
What for you, all-conference? Second team all-conference, first team all-conference?
Second.
Second team all-conference?
Yeah.
I'm Savannah Johansson, and I don't have anything to say either.
Come on.
Okay.
I'm Hannah Wood, and I'm just happy to be part of this team for four years and see Diamond winning in a lot of different sports.
What was the key to success? You came, I mean, obviously, you lost the first game, and then never looked back at that. Why? What was different? What made your team unique?
Well, I think...
We're all close.
We're all pretty close, and we just learned, realized that we just needed to work together more and just work together better again.
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations.
And I'll just second that, and this meeting is adjourned, and we are moving into executive session. Thank you. Yeah.